You know.
Yeah, you can get water in the car, don't you? Just pour a little bit of drains out.
Hello, gentlemen.
Hey.
How's it going, Chuck?
Did you get blown away the other day?
Darn near. It was something else. We were inside and it, uh, I just finished up doing the lawn and everything and working outside and it just, it started raining and raining and it's like, oh my gosh, this is, uh...
I've been seen across the street demonstration somewhere.
Yeah, that's the way it was with us. And then the wave was like ripping leaves off the tree and everything. I, I haven't, I don't think I've ever seen anything like that in a storm.
I've seen a few.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually mad storms, not like that.
I saw the rain.
Yes, so more than usual people some pumps. That's what it is.
Wow.
That was a lot of water.
And then it was two hours after.
Right.
I think age-related, uh, something, I think. I'm trying to get over it though, thinking about you. I'm not saying so, I'll put it that way right now.
You said age-related. I feel like I'm almost gonna make a, uh, a public apology or dissmation because I'm like, don't listen to your your crazy, I didn't, somebody told me.
Yeah.
Did you see it?
I saw it.
I, I apparently referred to my parents as aging. It's my mom that's super mad, so, uh...
Right.
I'm like, man, I'm...
Maturing.
Yeah, maturing. Oh my gosh, she said she's... Well, yeah. Yeah. It's crazy about my mom, it's her birthday.
Okay, so it's not backup? That's great.
Wow. So I believe she's taking your job and my dad is eight. So she's under seven years. Yeah, she was already a parent. Protective. Oh, yes, she's, she's an eight-year-old.
Oh, yeah, they won't take him. Kimball won't take him unless he's wrapped.
But, you know, here you are. Now you got a lot of fifty-dollar bills of stuff.
On top of that.
Imagine that. I would not have guessed that. Well, I should agree.
Was it, did it even on top of?
What lead to this question?
Right.
Underground tanks?
No, you don't want for water holding. It's better to get the answer than to wonder.
Instead of the system being mobile well. Finals, models, you're about, hold the water.
Just, uh, like it's unreleased and things.
Yeah. I'm great. It's, it's very costly. They probably have federal funding.
I'm sure. Yeah, there's no way from there, yeah.
But that's, that's the way you control the water. Strong underneath where...
But there is a process.
Out back state.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Oh, geez.
Yeah.
And, and run off of that.
Like look into the chat.
Into Jackson's.
And thank you for thanking us. That was so cool. I mean, this is such a great day. Yeah, they were excited to...
On first, he's wise, then asked.
Yeah, he was really excited.
That was very exciting.
And I thought maybe instead of white.
James, which is the son of a teacher. Well, he can load her with the cards and that. He's been doing this for a long time. But he does experience. It's a problem.
But the sun's back out there.
Yes, there was a car across the road and an ambulance across my, the road that I was trying to come here on. Get in here, was a problem. And then, then, I mean, obviously, I'm coming down the hill or an edge hill, right? You can see, blocked off. So I stop and I go to make a quick turn, reasonable guess. The woman in front of me, they're behind me, as I was going like this, decided she should start.
Ron, this is JD.
I was gonna say, you look really... Okay, how are you?
Well, pretty good.
Yeah, this has been a while since I've seen you.
Well, no, Saturday night.
Well, that's true, well, yeah. Although you were over in the garage.
Yes, right. I was pushing water.
Yep. We, I was...
This is Steven and John over here.
We had reservations at Lucius for my daughter's birthday during the storm.
Can you hear me, Ben?
Yes.
Yes, Darrell, we can hear you.
I can barely hear you.
It's starting to flood my driveway. So get down and come across that.
Can you, would you talk to him, speak for a moment?
It's probably because we're not talking to our microphones right now.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to get myself half in. Darrell, can you hear me? What I'm, what I'm gonna hear. Okay.
They're not gonna hear nothing.
All right. I'll be standing by then.
Okay. You can sit, Darrell. It's okay.
What's that?
You can sit. You don't have to stand.
Paul Harvey.
And now the rest of the story.
I'm dating myself here. Paul Harvey did a commentary every day.
Noon and five was six.
And so that was on local broad, uh, WHBC, and, because that's the station you got during the day. That was one of the four series XM, and...
Uh, Phil, if I may, can you see that?
Who's that news guy? Jim Barnett?
I was, I was, I was listening to Paul Harvey.
Fuck, how are you?
On nine eleven.
Oh, really?
I had it on radio.
You're, you're a veteran of this.
If you want to.
Let a missile. The Pentagon.
How about Bill Karen?
It's a special day.
It's still, uh... There you go.
Bonnie.
Oh, yeah. That really does me. Bring the envelope.
I mean, what should I do?
Bill Karen, his wife was a secretary.
What's going on? Why don't you sit down? But how you would always have a home and... Good. I didn't call this job. I didn't know that I'd find it to be those. I didn't think you'd try to move the finance department, but there was no way for you to actually talk to somebody in the finance department. He had a question about, he...
I was talking to somebody during the day, I think you were talking, uh, they got in the food stamps. And then I can't answer them.
This is, this is just for what it's worth.
You say one, two, but I'm not.
We got this in a minute.
Oh, yeah. Our, 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 our.
That if they would have been able to find this paper. I didn't think we'd be... Okay, okay, perfect.
That doesn't sound right, yeah.
His original story, I guess you have to keep reading my handwriting. I'd be happy to send him an email when it's time to get the information. Can you look into that?
I appreciate it, sorry. Awesome.
Yeah, I don't, I don't listen to it. It's insane.
Doesn't go along with me.
Well, unfortunately.
Calling.
I called it. This is, this is, um, yeah. I imagine this is where we have to find out.
Nothing. I'm not concerted this week, so...
Oh, this week?
I'm not this week. I thought it was gonna be, well, I thought it was gonna be last April this week. It's not. I'm surgeon head. Today. I'm so happy. I mean, I bought tickets today. I totally bought tickets today. So I was like, you know what? Here we go, going to the beer fest.
That's awesome.
What?
Yeah, testing out, eating the best game.
Five to eight?
After, yeah, after.
I'm full of apples.
In effect.
Put it?
Yeah.
You can delete it. Come hang out.
No, I think it was effective in that way.
Oh, okay. Yeah, oh.
This is John.
I don't know. I, I'm, I'm...
It's awesome.
We have technical. Where's your house?
I've got the, the trophy on my work. It is like the greatest. I'm, I'm halfway thinking about it. I'm thinking of tomorrow because he's got a rider and he'll grab it so I... I'm half thinking, so what if I just come up with something like, like not as cool? And give it to him. But I was...
He's pretty sick.
Seventeen o'clock.
Yeah. It's, it's...
Wow.
That's not really cool.
Oh, okay.
It's in. I knew that was coming. I don't know anything.
Good.
Yeah?
Yeah. Well, I'm curious now more than anything. So I've got a buddy, Josh, he was a, uh, was, I think he volunteered for the past two, three years.
Oh.
Do you know this guy?
Yeah, I remember you telling this story.
He's a good catch drop both times.
Oh, really?
He's the undefeated champion, so... So he was our first year here with Funky Turtle last year.
Is Funky Turtle coming back?
Where does it come from?
Yeah, but he was from...
Oh, that's right.
It's my buddy Josh, I think he's anticipating we pay three people, so...
I was appreciating that, Josh.
I was thinking, um, I thought one was just...
Oh. That would be adorable.
I get real anxious. Off with the break.
Are you?
That's why I smile as soon as you tell me what you're saying.
You set me up, because that was what I said.
That means I...
Throwing out the pies.
Catch.
Catcher.
Did you hear me, Carl?
I was wearing in.
Tell me, I apologize.
So what do you... The way it grew, it, it, that's your...
Yes, that's why I asked, how do you pronounce this?
It's a pronunciation, his family's pronunciation, their name.
Now, I don't know.
So.
Before again.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, I did make your spelling.
I guess you tried to reach out to me, but sister...
Oh, yeah.
Been reaching out since, uh...
Sorry, police force.
Keep rolling.
Free zone.
Blowing down.
Um, hey, he is doing...
Where are you going? Oh, right.
Oh, you have my...
Yeah.
Oh, okay, cool.
It wasn't that bad. I kind of put it around, I thought we could have figured it out. Oh, God. This is the person who...
Okay, no problem. Why just, I guys just do my due diligence.
Then there's my truck blocking it.
Of course, you've been talking to him, so that's...
Have you?
One, two, three.
Are you going to take just like, good, are you? Good, love the baby. Good. Take a little... You're like... And now I can get me one too. Yeah, that's, she's so... See, that's like, that's more my funny. Like, I'm never the one like, can I get a baby?
Hell. My, my, that's a tightening skill.
It's also quite, quite a trick.
I'm good. I don't even know how.
Yeah, and I'm in a condition to run. I can jump on a bicycle for a short thing. I'm not in shape to run right now. Not at all.
Okay. Sorry, this works. Out right? Okay. Are you? Nice to meet you, person. Thank you again for your phone call. Please do.
But that's what's happening. That's like, um, my people shake this up, and then isn't it like a... And that's what he's getting. Right, it was, it was the opposite of what you was making. And those are not what you're saying to me. I know.
And I have children.
But I haven't heard any, from anybody, but I always think that, like, the people... It is... Think that would be like, who is this? Would you have a place? You know? So I do think that's a little bit of that. Yeah, I know. He's like, you wait. Creating one time to make. But hey. What do you want this? I don't know. That's what I said. Like, I did go for my dad, he's like, he's... If he like, I drive a little bit, like, so I have to go down. Yeah, actually, and so kind of looking at the way... Not like, you know, this. If we don't have a... Do you have a light breaking? I mean, there's that, but...
Are you with the reporter?
Yes, I am.
What's your name?
Sam.
Sam, okay, Sam, I'm Jamie, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
You got me in trouble.
I know, but...
Which one? So, I mean, I refer to my parents as aging.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah, well, my, my mom's not too bad. I hope you're responding.
They do graceful, it's, should I throw that in?
That's what I said. I think you just messed my...
Quote, quote.
Yeah, exactly. I told you, I'm cheering. Okay, she says I'm...
Aging like wine, you know, good things age. Oh, yeah, yeah. It doesn't matter. She works, she's a board or not. Yeah, but see, I think that they... So. I want to email, um... Do you know who I'm talking about, David? Um, it's like who I would report that, not Brian Jones. No, 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 no. He'd be interested to see. Pat, what did you say? Rod Maro?
Maro?
No.
Yeah.
Got it. It's the old day. That's how my mind thinks.
I, I know, because that person said they never got anything yet from you.
I know. Because I've been looking for Rod. See, but once I, oh, you're kind of close. I mean, sure.
Yeah, none of the letters are the same.
Listen, I play Wordle each day, and I can usually get it. I didn't claim to ever have a good memory on anything I've ever said. Well, I'm glad you're realizing that. I remember you might say, well, it's like, do I tell you this every time? Because I can't remember, but like... Yeah. I mean, maybe. Anyway.
Don't throw it at us.
I do not find myself driving down Park Street.
How do you mention that?
What I noticed was, is how like you, to get the real life, like, me, it's hard. My eyes, it felt like I'm firing a chest. It's like taking three times more. But what it was, is I was just...
Where you can ask her.
We dropped something off today. BOE today, like, seventh street, right now.
Two.
Three.
It was cruising a lot.
Right. Hey, Pat, where, where did you say that, um, the woman was from this morning? What street was that?
Well, there's a lot. Which ones have you and I talked about? Um, did you do a couple of reports for...
Yeah, there were a lot.
There were a lot.
Yeah. We, I was at, uh, two homes on Wise. And both, like, up to a foot and a half. Garage door, like, broke for him, and then all the water and the... So there was... Um, um, Matt's, um, in Montset, but they were all out.
Right, sir.
Hi.
Yeah, I was over there with, with, Matt, with a manhole cover.
Well, you didn't put the one on.
Can you hear me, Ben?
We missed.
Down in the basin?
We did.
And you had them.
Yeah. We had, we...
He said they put a manhole cover.
Yeah, we did.
I go, you did not move the basin.
No, no, that's a big concrete.
Yeah, you did not, Matt.
Oh, yeah, that was me, all by myself.
Yeah, like a giant eight by eight, what would you say, eight by eight, but Pat?
At least five ton, five ton piece of concrete.
Listen to him acting like he was dead.
Yeah.
Wow.
Oh, it was fascinating, I told, that's what I'm emailing right now.
I now call order the special meeting of Monday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, time is seven PM. Opening prayer, Jamie.
Let us play a prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Also, Father, please be with those who have been negatively affected by the rains this past weekend. I don't believe that in this area anybody has lost their life, but certainly there's cleanup still yet to do, so please be with them and, uh, please be with us here in this meeting. Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Ben, would you please call the roll?
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Shoya?
Here.
Member Lyric?
Here.
Member Lyric?
Here.
Member McLeaster?
Here.
And member Volt?
Here.
Seven, three.
Okay, at this time, members of the public wishing to address city council may do so. Each speaker will be granted five minutes. As a reminder, the rules will be posted on the screen to the audience's right. As this is a special council, uh, we, uh, special council meeting, we ask that the topics of the discussion are limited to those appearing on this meeting's agenda.
Good evening. My name is Jim Tebrick. I live at, uh, three oh nine Roseland Street Southwest, uh, here in town. And, um, besides the house that I live in, I own and rent out a house in North Canton under the current system, uh, that we have had in place for a long time in regards to rentals. I also have three rental properties in Canton, and, uh, I am aware of the system that they have down there. And, uh, I don't think the system in Canton and places like that is necessarily something that we would want to emulate. Uh, it's more of an adversarial antagonistic, uh, climate between the property owners and the government with the system of inspections and registrations, and I don't necessarily consider that a worthy goal. Uh, I guess my main objection to this is that how discriminatory it is, um, you know, to, um, have a problem with a rental that has peeling paint, but the owner occupied house to the left, uh, that one's okay. Uh, to, uh, you know, focus on who is renting a rental property because you want to go after the income and so forth from the people that are working there. But, uh, you know, the private owner operated house to the other side, uh, you know, we don't go after that one. And, um, another element to this that, uh, I think I've, uh, think was emphasized in the newspaper, uh, safety and welfare issues. Well, uh, if something's unsafe in a rental house, uh, why is the same thing not, uh, an issue in an owner occupied house across the street? And, uh, on that topic of the, uh, safety and welfare, I'm getting a, a little resentful of, uh, uh, you know, uh, campaigns like this, uh, ordinance and, and other ones, uh, playing the safety card all the time to try to get things through here. So, um, like I say, I, I don't think we have that big of a problem, uh, with rental, uh, properties in North Canton. Uh, I think if you were to drive around Canton and that, you certainly wouldn't want what you see there, uh, here. And, and, and that's, you know, the system that they have down there with the inspections and doing just exactly what you have to do to get by and so forth. Um, uh, also, I, uh, gleaned from what I've been reading that some of this, uh, management of this perhaps would be, uh, turned into a third party. Um, I'm not happy with the direction that, uh, the property tax, uh, going to the Rita program, uh, was. I found them very difficult to deal with, uh, extremely hard to get ahold of a person to talk to. Uh, so, uh, you know, growing in that direction, I don't think is a positive. So, um, like I say, I don't, uh, don't favor, uh, this, uh, legislature you're looking at. And, uh, uh, I think maybe there's an element of spite or meaningness towards people that have rental, let's go get them or something. And, um, I would really like to, uh, see this turned down or, uh, make it equal and apply to everyone. You know, as I drove down here today, I was surprised at how many lawns I saw that, uh, needed mow that were way past, uh, you know, probably haven't seen a lawnmower this year. And I, I think we have, you know, ordinances already to deal with stuff like that. And we'll, uh, you know, use the tools you already have to control issues like that. So, um, like I say, I just, uh, urge that, uh, this be, uh, repealed and maybe, uh, reworked or refought. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak about the items on the agenda tonight?
Chuck Osborne, three oh seven February Street, Southeast North Canton, Ohio. I want to address last week's discussion and subsequent vote for the first reading of, on ordinance forty-three, twenty twenty-two regarding rental registration. This same ordinance is up for a second reading at tonight's special council meeting. First, I will say I am in the same camp as council members John Orr and Dave Matheny in that I believe rental registration should be applied equally to all rentals in the city. As we all know, laws have to be fair and equally applied to all. Secondly, I will have to take issue with the fact that opponents of rental registration were allowed to return to the podium a second time, and for what purpose? The minds of this council and the interest, and the administration were not going to be changed. With regard to the young lady who was here to speak in her capacity as the governmental affairs director for Stark Trumbull Area Realtors, I must say I was dismayed at the line of questioning she endured from council member Darrell Revolt. Her name was Kayla Atchison, a very professional young lady who I believe was treated shamelessly. What was the purpose of bringing Mrs. Atchison back to the podium? Mr. Revolt, you, your fairly pointed questions, as you described them, were, from my perspective, intended to humiliate and embarrass her, plain and simple. In your continued rebuttal to her, you brought to the attention of Ms. Atchison and everyone at the meeting the existence of ordinance number one thirty-four seventy-eight passed forty-four years ago that required all rental owners within thirty days notify the city, particularly the finance director, of all the tenants that they are renting to. You then asked her how many of her association, association members have complied with this ordinance? I would like to flip the coin and ask why City Hall has not enforced compliance with this ordinance? Why haven't the many finance directors, city administrators, and mayors who have come and gone over the last forty-four years enforced this ordinance? Mr. Revolt, in addition to the decades you have been on, member of the city council, you were also mayor for three years from September ninety-eight until July two thousand and one. You say you want to collect data on rentals, but yet in your decades here at City Hall, apparently the passage of ordinance number one thirty-four seventy-eight has collected nothing but dust. In your shameless effort to embarrass Ms. Atchison, I believe you have brought embarrassment publicly, publicly to City Hall that has made no attempt to enforce a city ordinance passed to provide you the data you so desperately desire. I would ask that this council body send a... I would ask that this council body send a letter to Kayla Atchison apologizing for the manner in which Mr. Revolt publicly embarrassed and humiliated her. Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to address council? Moving on to, uh, business, uh, I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance forty dash twenty twenty-two. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Question carries. Ben?
An ordinance establishing chapter one ninety-three transient occupancy tax of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton and thereby imposing a transient occupancy tax for the benefit of the city of North Canton, Ohio.
We have discussed it, any other questions? Okay, and move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Okay, uh, I'm going to.
I leave a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance forty-one dash twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Then will you please read?
An ordinance accepting a record plat of the sanctuary phase five located within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Ready?
So this is the third reading, and, um, in light of the weather that we had this weekend, uh, Ben, will you put that picture up, please, for me? So this is the other side of the street from where phase five is going in. And this was after the rain, I think the water was actually about nine or ten feet higher towards those houses. And I know the planning commission has reviewed this and approved this, but we're adding a lot more water into this same creek bed to remove the water from that area. I'm concerned, I think the residents might be a little bit concerned. I don't know that it's a bad thing that this development's going in by any means, but I think that we owe it to the residents of the sanctuary to possibly postpone this for twenty days, make sure that planning commission and Mr. Van Gundy and everybody still feel comfortable with what happened this past weekend and the water that we're adding to that still suit those residents. Just a question that I have, I don't know if anybody else would like to comment on that? Not?
First I'm seeing it.
Yeah, I know.
Mr. DeRio, would you?
Yeah, I.
Make some comments.
Um, you know, I reviewed this with the engineer today, Mr. Van Gundy, we don't see any reason, uh, to withhold approval on this. Um, and this is, this is certainly, uh, a hundred year or a five hundred year rain. And I don't really think that, from what I've been told, that adding, uh, uh, the, uh, these additional houses to this phase, when you look at the, uh, calculations that go to determine a, uh, the rain that's coming into an area, uh, and, and for the flooding of it covers such a large geographic area that the number of houses that are being put into this is just a, a pin drop compared to what's happening, uh, throughout the region for which the calculations are being made. So I don't see a reason, uh, particularly at this phase, based on having the engineer and superintendent, to, uh, put a hold on this.
Okay, well, that helps me because I wasn't able to get in touch with them today since the rain occurred this weekend. I appreciate the fact that you did reach out to them. If they're not concerned, then I'm not concerned, but I felt that we should at least discuss that as a possibility. So thank you for, for addressing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Were there many residents who called in complaining or viewing their comments?
I'm only aware of, uh, one homeowner that, uh, sent the video. And, uh, this could be something that, that the HOA will have to address versus, uh, the responsibility of the city, but, uh...
Well, in regards to the video that was sent, and I've reviewed that video with the appropriate, uh, individuals and, uh, as, as I'm sure, as disconcerting as it is to see that volume of water come, come, uh, through your, your development, the, uh, the, the retention ponds, uh, worked as planned. The water stayed, um, sufficiently far from the houses. And, you know, I wish that, uh, that, uh, all of the old development in the city was laid out as well as this new development is because it seemed to work, uh, exactly as intended. The water moved through, the retention ponds were large enough to, to hold back a lot of water and then, uh, not create, you know, too much of a issue, except that it is very disconcerting to look out your windows and see that.
Absolutely, and I thought we ended the residence, it was the conversation and discussion on it. But, Mr. DeRio, I appreciate the fact that you reached out to the city engineer. Builds my confidence back up, appreciate that. Any other questions, concerns? This is the president, want to call the vote?
Sure. Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance? Forty-one dash twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
I have a motion and a second to read by title only from the ordinance forty-three dash twenty twenty-two.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance establishing chapter seven oh three, registration of rental units of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton and thereby requiring the registration and inspection of residential rental units located within the city of North Canton.
Daryl?
Am I plausible?
Yes.
You are.
Thank you. Um, let me begin to, to my left, uh, John, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Well, I addressed most of my feelings last week. Why haven't we been following up over the last forty-four years?
Well, John, I think that's a, that's a fair question, and I think it rests with the changing nature of the community. Forty, forty years ago, uh, rental units were principally confined, but not exclusively, to apartment buildings. And in those intervening forty years, we have seen the expansion of rental units to single family homes. And I think that is the reason why, uh, we are looking at this today. The, the sheer number of single family homes that are now rentals within the community.
Thank you.
John, I can't see your face, so I'm going to assume that there's no follow-up.
No, I said thank you, um...
Okay, very good.
My thoughts are still the same, I think it should be all, but, you know, until that's changed, I will continue to vote no on this.
Very good. This is Amy.
Thank you. So the purpose of this, and I'll read it, it says, "The purpose of this chapter is to hold all property owners and agents to the same property maintenance standards as set forth in part seventeen of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, and to provide a safe and sanitary environment for the residents and their guests of all rental dwelling units." This is asking for all, but the registration is for only those that ate units or less. And I think in this, we should incorporate some way of making sure that all rental units are registered, that the inspections follow based on cause, and there are several items there that could generate cause. Those being those items in chapter seventeen that can be visible from outside or change of ownership, change of tenant, anything like that that would draw attention to that rental unit. So I stand with the fact that this could be better legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Shroyer?
Um, I have the same opinion, I support it as it's written. I have nothing new to add from, from last week.
Christine?
You're skipping Stephanie?
Yeah, I did, I'll come back to you, I apologize.
Okay, okay. I don't have anything further to add. I've not been contacted by anyone still.
Stephanie?
Uh, no further recommendations, I think we will get to all. I'm gonna adhere to the direction of, um, administration and what they think they can do first, and then we'll move accordingly.
Mr. McLeaster?
Um, I think I'm gonna take the same direction that, uh, member Wern has, that, uh, we pass what we have now and follow the direction of the administration, we'll get to all eventually. And, yeah, I have nothing new to add, um, from what we talked about already. Thank you.
Mayor, I suspect you're down there on the end, you got anything to add at this time?
I think the, uh, the, the legislation written is sufficient to go forward with the rental registration. There's a number of things that the city will be working on in the future, you try to address many of the issues that was presented today, uh, this evening. And, uh, it all takes time, process, and people and money to get this through, but I think this is a good starting point for us. And as we go forward, uh, any amendments that the, that our legislative body needs to make, we can address those as we go forward. But, uh, I believe this is a long time issue that's been coming so that we avoid the blight that you see in other communities and to keep our, uh, our neighborhoods, uh, in a quality, uh, living nature. And, uh, uh, we have to start somewhere, and I think this is a, a good starting point for us. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Mr. DeRio, do you have anything to add?
No.
Mr. Shroyer, I've concluded.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion, um, to amend for it?
Second.
I'll conform motion.
Are you motion to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No, no.
Question carries, five two. Um, any other words from council or administration tonight?
Well, the special report, I don't think we did that.
I just was opening the opportunity for special discussions.
I like things that I can plan on.
Gotcha, all right, well.
The only thing I'll say is, and I said to Jamie, I wonder if some of the yards aren't being kept because it's no mo may? And in, in effort to protect the environment and help the bees and all the things, sandy lines and everything, I have noticed a lot. And I guess it's like a thing in Canton, and they're noticing it, and so I just wonder if that is why some of the yards are unkept.
Hmm, not so much.
Maybe, you don't know.
I've never heard of, no, no, I've never heard that before.
It's a thing.
Is it?
Yeah. Yes, it is.
My buddy told me about it this weekend, I thought he was crazy, so.
It's a thing.
It's not a thing.
I'm standing with you, it's a thing.
Part, part of some sort of dystopia.
All right, anything else? All right, my motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.